Good evening. Should like to call this Fairfield City Council Housing Authority meeting to order, please. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bertani.
Here.
Councilmember Moy. Councilmember Vacaro. Vice Mayor Tim.
Here.
Mayor Price.
So, we are a full council this evening. Thank you very much. And the invocation this evening, ladies and gentlemen, will be led by Councilwoman Pamela Bertani. Pamela, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. God in heaven, we thank you for another day. We thank you for the sunshine. We thank you for the rain. We thank you for allowing us to assemble one more time in this place. And I pray that as we do so, we continue to do what is right for our residents and for our city. I pray that you give us the discernment that we need to do what it is you would have us do. And I pray especially that we remember that you are here with us and that you are leading and guiding us. Please bless us to be respectful to one another and to above and beyond anything else, to remember that we are blessed to be here because you lived and died and rose again for us to be here. So it is in the name of Jesus Christ, I pray this all, and in the name of God, I declare it done. Amen.
And the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Rick Vacaro, please. Council reports. Catherine, would you like to begin, please?
I'm going to pass.
Okay. Councilmember Bertani, please.
I'm going to pass, too. I apologize to everyone for us getting in here a little bit late. We were in meetings, and so I'll forego my report at this time. Thank you.
Vacaro?
Same, Mayor.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
No, I'll pass, too, Mayor. Thank you.
Just have one very quick announcement to make. First of all, apologize for our being tardy this evening, but we had important business we needed to take care of. And the other big announcement is that again, next week is National Night Out. And, Mr. City Manager, we have a number of new neighborhoods participating this year, don't we?
We have, I think we're going to have about fifty-five to sixty different neighborhoods participating this year, so we are rapidly working to finalize the list of where we'll be going. So we'll be doing the usual. We'll have the bus out about town. We'll all be packed in with the school district, visiting various neighborhoods, and then we're going to have staff throughout the entire community, different departments. I think even our HR department this year is going to have a mini job fair going on, promoting all the great jobs we have available to the community to really help represent what we have going on here.
Any other report to make?
From my perspective, the only comment that I wanted to make was I just wanted to acknowledge Carl Dumas in the third row. This Thursday, he will be retiring from the organization, and this is his last council meeting. So I just wanted to thank him very much publicly for his hard work, his dedication to the organization and the community, and, as you know, and we'll talk on Thursday, but we wish you the best, Carl. Thank you.
I think Carl deserves a standing ovation for his long service to the city of Fairfield. And, Mr. City Attorney, you have some legal business to report in closed session, please.
I do. The council met in closed session on Samlo versus City of Fairfield, which has been pending in federal district court, Eastern District of California. And council on a five-zero vote approved the settlement of that case for the total payment of eighty thousand dollars, fifty-five thousand dollars paid to Mr. Samlo, and twenty-five thousand dollars paid to his attorney.
You. And Madam Clerk, do you have a report, please?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
And, Mr. City Manager, Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy, that presentation this evening?
Yes, and unfortunately, Don couldn't be with us this evening, so we'll have Carl Dumas will come up and do that presentation on our behalf.
Carl, if you would, please.
Good evening. Let's see. Oops. What am I doing here?
Why don't we start talking?
Sorry for the technical difficulty in that. Thanks. In August, we will have staff bring before you our five-year consolidated plan that we've been working on for the past several months. As a part of that plan, we have put in a component for Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy Initiative. And let me take a step back just to talk a little bit about Community Development Block Grant Program and the funds, as some of our audience members might not be familiar with it. Fairfield is an entitlement city, which means that every year, we annually get our allocation for Community Development Block Grant Funds from HUD. And we usually average, or lately, anyway, we've been getting in the low seven hundreds. This year, we're a little bit over seven hundred and thirty thousand for the next allocation that we're getting. As a part of that, you have public service funds, you have non-public service funds, and you have administration that happens out of those funds. Tonight, what we want to talk about is the non-public service funds. Okay? The public service ones, funds are items that we usually participate with Meals on Wheels in, the Levin, those types of programs. The allocation for non-public service funds, usually you'll see different projects and programs that we propose. It could be anything from sidewalk repair, different types of activities for it. So that's really the topic for tonight. And what I want to do is walk you through a little bit of the component that we have, that we're going to recommend as a part of the five-year consolidated plan that you're going to see next month. Okay? So what we're going to recommend is that we go ahead as a participant in CDBG and create a Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative. So what happens when you do that, you're able to then select neighborhood or areas within your community that you can have as a Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy area. And the great thing about that is it gives you an opportunity to really designate and help out certain areas that are in need more than other areas are in the community. One of the, or several of the components of that is that we do, as I mentioned, have the five-year consolidated plan that we're doing, and we drafted the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy as a part of it. It's been up for public review since mid-July. It will be until the second week of August as well. That strategy that we drafted contains boundaries that we're recommending, that we use for the program. Mostly, those boundaries are West Texas Street in downtown, North Texas Street, as well as East Fairfield. The map shows the boundary areas there in the different colors. And what we're recommending that we do as a part of it is to create one area and three sub-areas. The sub-areas are denoted in the colors there. And within those areas, we'll have programs and activities that we believe will benefit those areas. Now, what you see color-coded on the map are the Community Development Block Grant eligible census tracts that we have within Fairfield. So what we're really recommending is that we'll have a program and a strategy that will help, or has the ability to help, all the properties that are within that census tract. And you see up there, the question of why focus on these particular areas, they're the areas that need the most help in terms of community revitalization in town. As you know, Fairfield was built primarily to support, the housing was built in the 50s and things, and before that, to support military. And so we have a lot of older areas. We've grown from that, had new production of housing, and some of those areas have not been revitalized in a number of years. So we want to focus our attention on these areas. And one of the ways that we come up with this is, we actually go through the demographics of these areas, and once you do that, you really, and I would, I'd say to anyone, to look through the plan that we have that's on public display and look at the demographics, and it will really tell a story and a picture of why these areas need help. In terms of the poverty level, it's higher in these areas than it is in the city. In terms of minority representation, it's higher in these areas than it is in other cities. And so there's a real need to help out in these areas. And that's what this strategy hopefully will do. Some of the positive impacts that you can get out of this strategy are noted there. The biggest thing that happens with it is, you're able to take your non-public service CDBG funds and use them in a broader-based area and with more activities. And that is the big difference. We, in the late 90s, we created a Neighborhood Revitalization Area. It was primarily focused on downtown area, south of Texas Street, up to Pennsylvania and in that area. And it was at the beginning of the time when HUD started authorizing Neighborhood Revitalization Areas. And so one of the things we were concerned with at that time was, how do we use that program to help? What we had at the time was a Q&amp;T program, Quality Neighborhood Team. And unfortunately, we could not use that program to benefit those areas. So the programs that we ran in Q&amp;T, we could not use the revitalization area as a part of it. I mention that because it's a key. With this, with what we're proposing now, it's such a broader area and a broader number of activities that we have more flexibility in how to spend our Community Development Block Grant Funds, and that is the real key to this program that we're proposing. This slide shows probably a little over twenty activities that are eligible, that staff went through the list from HUD. We looked at some of the activities that we believe the area would benefit from, based on the demographics that were run. We came up with this list. It's what we recommend as the broad brush of activities that could occur in there. We will then focus on which particular segments of the area that we showed on the map, as well as which particular activities we take on first. With that, I'm going to conclude, but I did want to make note that this program and the activities that we're proposing, it's just one of many programs that we've talked about over the years. You know, we have the rehab for Allenwood Park, we have Linear Park, we have the homeless strategy. This is just one component of many things that we're doing to improve the community. And with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions again.
Comments, questions for Carl? Catherine? Carl, thank you very much. Process for public comments, please.
Speakers may address items on this agenda at the time each item is considered. Under public comments, the public may speak on items not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items except as authorized by law. Off-agenda items from the public will be taken under consideration without discussion by the council and may be referred to staff. To speak on an agenda item, please complete a speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the meeting or at the latest prior to the time for public comments on that item. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to four minutes, with one minute to summarize their remarks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have two requests to speak cards under public comments, Mr. George Gwynn and Mr. Richard Battersby, please. George?
Is it the left one or the right one? Oh, great. Good evening, once again. Got two items I wish to address tonight. First is subordination loans. Subordination loans are a lot more risky for municipalities than the straight loans. It's kind of like gambling. The further down the totem pole you are, as far as your chance to recover money, the less chance you have. So if you get down to, say, fourth or fifth position, you're probably not going to get anything. So I really hope that the city doesn't do subordination loans because it's too risky, and you guys have enough to deal with already. You don't need to add more fuel to the fire. One example is the Cannon Station Development Project, I believe, which is on the agenda tonight, but there's other instances, too. But anyway, I hope you'll bear in mind that they're high-risk, and you really shouldn't be getting into those kind of areas. Other thing I'd like to say is, Mr. Battersby, as you know, is going to be a speaker tonight. I hope you guys really listen, because he comes up with very good ideas. He very, is very detailed in his comments, and he has a lot of logic to what he says. So I think if you guys pay more attention to what he says, I think the public will be better served. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Mr. Battersby, please.
Mayor, city council, staff, and thank you, George. I didn't know I had an opening act, but I guess now I do. I am going to try to do a PowerPoint. We shall see. Left-handed. Now, that's teamwork. Teamwork, Mr. Mayor, the city staff, and Richard Battersby working together. Please mark this day on your calendar. I know a lot of you folks out there think that I just come to council to complain. Believe me, the last thing I want to do is be here, talking about things that I perceive as being problems. I like to talk about good things. My grandson's actually at his swimming lesson. I'm missing that to be here with you, and that's, for me, it's a significant sacrifice. I want to talk to you a little bit more about these ongoing issues that we never seem to get resolved. I put together a little PowerPoint presentation because I find that it's more understandable for folks out there in the audience that are watching to see the actual documents I'm referring to. I've been a bit frustrated over the years to bring items forward, pass out handouts, but nobody really knows what I'm talking about. We've got some problems with developments in our area, in Wood Creek community, started with the park and ride the city constructed. This is just a headline from the Daily Republic. After much discussion, everyone agrees that that park and ride project doesn't meet municipal code for setbacks on seven of the eight property lines. I'll go into that later. I still don't feel that it's resolved, but that sort of set the stage. So along comes this Popeyes project, right next to it. After we already raised the issue about the setback concerns, the violations of municipal code, which the city claiming immunity from its own municipal code, kind of get that, but that's not what you said in the staff report. Again, we'll pick that up later. So along comes the Popeyes project. We're pretty vigilant. We're watching now. Staff report says it's going to be fifteen feet, said it's going to meet code. Again, fifteen-foot setbacks, landscaping plan. Next slide. Nice little buffer zone along Harkford Avenue and Oliver Road. So we're just thinking, there's no way that the city is going to put in two projects, back-to-back, next to each other. Neither one of them complies with municipal code. Well, there it is, folks. That's your fifteen-foot setback at the Popeyes, and that's where the problem began. We brought this to the attention of the city within months of this property being constructed. You couldn't tell from the plans what the actual distance was, because the plans before the planning commission didn't have distance notations. This, again, it does not meet the fifteen-foot setback requirement, and that's when we got into the discussion of the explanation that was ventured. This is what it would actually look like had it had the fifteen-foot setback. You can see, as the citizens expressed, the project is too large for the property. Our input was ignored. So when we raised this issue, the response we got back from the city consistently was, well, there was an averaging methodology that was used, and the project does meet the standard, does meet code. I'm providing you some written examples. There's also verbal examples that came out in city council meeting, but these are emails from the three individuals that I know that created this averaging methodology, or Carl Dumas, and thank you for your 27 years of service. I'm hoping we can get an explanation as to where this averaging methodology came from, from you before you retire, because you're the first person that created this terminology, to my knowledge. But also, David White and Greg Stepanisich repeated this term multiple times before council over a two-year period. When we questioned it, we were told averaging methodology was used, it meets code. Well, and there's just another email. Along comes Mr. Battersby, myself, and I ask, well, okay, since you're so insistent this averaging methodology exists, I would like to use it for my projects. I have a fence. I'd like to use the averaging methodology. I want to put in a carport. I'd like to use the averaging methodology. City staff said, Mr. Battersby, sorry, you can't do that. The message was, only Cameron Najumi, the former city manager for Sassoon City and redevelopment director, who, by the way, has a family member on city staff, only he can use that, which we found objectionable. So a couple of city council members asked for a staff report. Lo and behold, here comes Mr. Feinstein. He says, guess what? There is no averaging methodology, and guess what? Popeyes Development does not meet code. So after two years of being told that there is an averaging methodology, and two years of being told that the project does indeed meet the requirement, the city has forced to admit that it doesn't, only because I asked to be granted the same benefit. Again, I mentioned, the persons promulgating this theory are Carl Dumas, David White, and Greg Stepanisich. And we have not yet got a legitimate answer and explanation. They never said the project doesn't meet code. They never said it was inappropriate or wrong to have this done. They just said, it's averaging methodology. Mr. Battersby, please go away. As part of Mr. Feinstein's presentation, we discovered that the Popeyes project, in addition to not meeting code, actually required two variances to meet code. Now, this is significant in that, if you want to get a variance yourself, you're going to have to pay fifty-five hundred dollars. How do I know that? Because when I asked to use the averaging methodology for my fence, that's what I was told in writing. I'd be happy to share that with anyone who'd like to see it. There's also a mandatory public hearing, and these decisions are appealable, none of which took place. So the fact of the matter is that this became a gift of public funds. Popeyes received the benefit of two variances without having to pay for them, as the rest of us in this room would have to. I brought this to the attention to the city manager, Greg Stepanisich, and also some of the city council, as well as my concerns about the averaging methodology. I was told this would be looked into. Then, along comes, and this was on May 16th, the city council meeting with Mr. Feinstein. May 23rd, along comes this closed session, and you can see down there, number two and three, these are employee performance evaluations, the city manager and the city attorney. So, great. I don't see any significance to that until I get this letter from the city council that says, hey, Mr. Battersby, based on your allegations, we held a special closed session to look into your allegations, and guess what? We can't find anything wrong with the actions of these employees. Determine the allegations were unfounded and without merit. So I said, great. Let's take a look at California Government Code that cited, and it's up there specifically. If you're going to look into a matter in closed session regarding specific allegations or complaints, you must provide written notice to the employees involved ahead of time, 24 hours ahead of time. So me... So me being me, I did a Public Record Act request, asking for those notices. I just got this request. You see the date, July 24th. Guess what? There's no responsive records. So what is being portrayed as an investigation into allegations and a special closed session based on my allegation was, in reality, nothing of the sort. So here, we seem to have a dilemma. Which way is it? City council, city manager? Did you have a closed session based on my specific allegations into misconduct by these employees, or was it just a general performance examination? I'm going back to the June 21st letter. I just wanted to remind you, you just saw the criteria. If you're going to look into specific allegations, you have to provide the written notice. The letter says, based on my allegations. They're making me feel special, like, you know what? We're listening to you, we're taking you serious. But the fact that there was no notices provided to the employees, if I go back, nah, I'm going to have to go back too far. If, the bottom line, if no notice is given, any disciplinary or other action taken by the legislative body against the employee is null and void unless you provide the notice. So what does that mean? If it was actually an investigation into my allegations, because there was no notice provided to the employee, no action could be taken on the findings. That's a predetermined outcome.
Richard, would you conclude, please?
I sure would. I'd like to conclude, not just for tonight, but, you know, perhaps for a longer-term solution, Mr. Mayor, and I really am serious, sincere when I say this. When are we going to start working together? If, as you say, everything was above board and conducted with integrity, transparency, and we've had accountability, let's get that third-party investigation I've been asking about. And by the way, that gift of public funds, that is not an insignificant matter.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you very much.
I was trying to wrap up there, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We turn now to the reconvening, the convening of the Housing Authority. Madam Clerk, if you would, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bertani?
Here.
Commissioner Moy? Commissioner Vaccaro?
Here.
Vice Chairman Tim?
Here.
Chairman Price?
Clerk, if you would, please. Items two and three, please.
Resolution HA 201704, the Fairfield Housing Authority approving agreement and all documents associated with the loan in the amount of $1.275 million between New Sunset Creek LP and the Fairfield Housing Authority, amending the terms of existing loan between the Fairfield Housing Authority and Sunset Creek Partners LP, and authorizing the Fairfield Housing Authority to subordinate these loans to senior financing for this rehabilitation project. Shall I read the second one?
And the second one, please.
Resolution HA 201705 of the Fairfield Housing Authority approving a loan in the amount of $400,000 between Fairfield Housing Authority and The Vines at Tabor for the acquisition and rehabilitation of real property located at 200 East Tabor.
There's will be Laura Snidman and Brian Briggs, please. Laura, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'm Laura Snidman, I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I am particularly gratified to be able to be here with you all this evening because there is a fabulous opportunity tonight for you all to make some great strides on your homeless strategy implementation, as well as see the culmination of months of very hard work, not only from city staff but from all of our community partners who are helping bring these projects to fruition. So we're really excited about it. As you all know, you have, several years ago, adopted a homeless strategy, and it's been updated several different times, most recently in January of this year, and we've made a lot of progress. There's four different pillars on this. One of them is protect the health and welfare of the community, and there's been all kinds of things that we've done, from our panhandling ordinance to our jail transport. Public education campaign is just about ready to be launched. The connection to services, we've recently made great strides with coordinated entry. We have just finished, we've just closed the official recruitment process for our caseworker to help our hit team. Over on the far right, the regional homeless strategy, that plan has actually been drafted and complete, and they're just beginning the early stages of implementation. So all kinds of great progress has been made on three of your four pillars. So tonight is the opportunity to make some significant strides with the supportive housing piece. This is kind of filling in a missing piece. Tonight, you're going to hear from Brian Briggs, and we have a whole host of folks here to help answer questions for you on two different projects. So with your indulgence, we will present information on two of your agenda items tonight at once to try and save a little bit of time. That's Sunset Creek and The Vines at East Tabor. One of them, as you know, is an existing, successful project that has been here for quite a number of years, and the other one is an opportunity to completely transform a very problematic property. As part of the presentation tonight, you'll hear quite a bit about supportive housing. Just keep in mind, as you hear about that, that's sort of the leap and the new thing that we're going to be able to help do here that will help with this homeless strategy implementation. There's a continuum of housing that's needed in this community. You start out often with shelters or crisis situations, moving to full independent living. So on this spectrum, this is in the part where they're independent living with some help. So you'll hear a little bit more about that. However, to put this in greater context, these projects together collectively represent 98 units, and the supportive housing is just for eight of those units. So it's a, we're sort of starting to dip our toe in the water of being able to make a real difference in addressing this issue. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Brian Briggs, who's done quite a bit of the work on these two projects, and you will get to hear a lot more about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Brian Briggs, Community Development. To begin, I'd like to acknowledge some members of a very diverse and dedicated team who brought these projects to where they are today so that I can present them to you. First, I'd like to recognize Don LeBarre, whose roles in these projects is invaluable but who's not able to be with us here tonight. In attendance this evening, we have our wonderful partners from Solano County. We also have various representatives from Midpen Housing Corporation. They've been a partner of ours since 1993 when Sunset Creek was developed. We have a representative from California Municipal Finance Authority who can answer questions on tax-exempt bonds if they arise. We also have the general partners from the ownership group of the entity that's purchasing 200 East Tabor. We are here tonight to discuss permanent supportive housing. How can the community work together to create resources that are needed to help address the issues of homelessness in our community? Since both of these projects on the Housing Authority agenda tonight have a permanent supportive housing component, I'd like to address them both at one time, and then later on in the agenda, the city council will be asked to open a public hearing to take public testimony on the wisdom of expending tax-exempt bonds on the Sunset Creek project. Let's begin by defining permanent supportive housing. There's a universally accepted definition for permanent supportive housing, which is designed to help our citizens lead a productive life in our community. Permanent supportive housing units require case management and wraparound services. Without these services, the likelihood of success of this project is limited and diminished. The services for permanent supportive housing at Sunset Creek will be provided by the employees of Mid Peninsula Housing Corporation and the many partners that they've engaged for these services at their other projects. For the Tabor project, those services will be provided through an MOU with Solano County, and Solano County and the Fairfield Housing Authority will work in tandem to develop a list of referrals to that particular project. In response to your direction, excuse me, let's move this here. In response to your direction on January 17th, staff is delivering two projects that provide eight units of permanent supportive housing. These projects create opportunities for people who are ready to transition into independent living. The projects aren't for those that require an inordinate amount of supervision. These are for folks who are generally independent, are ready to go to the next stage, and then that will create bed space at the crisis centers to backfill for those who really need additional service. Staff has pursued many options to create permanent supportive housing, including developing vacant property, rehabilitating existing multifamily apartment complexes, utilizing cargo containers, converting motels to permanent supportive housing, and developing tiny homes. The project I'd like to discuss first is Sunset Creek, an existing 75-unit property that was constructed in 1993 under a partnership with Solano Affordable Housing and Midpen Housing Corporation. After 24 years of providing affordable housing at this location, Mid Peninsula is looking to strategize and position itself to provide the same quality of housing for an additional 55 years. In order for that to work, they need to generate capital. They need, they're proposing an interior of the units, a rehabilitation of the interior of the units, exterior of the units, improvement of the safety on the property, and an upgrade to energy and water systems for the property. To accomplish this, Midpen is requesting that the Housing Authority restructure the existing debt on the property so they'll be able to leverage tax credits and tax-exempt bonds. They are also requesting that we continue our partnership and we provide public financing to the project in the form of a loan, and then also to subordinate our debt to that of a first lender so that a overall financing package can be put together for the project. Midpen is an important partner for the city to engage in this process as they are uniquely qualified to develop and manage permanent supportive housing units. They are recognized as one of the nation's leading developers and have extensive experience managing permanent supportive housing units. For this project, they are taking a holistic approach and are proposing to rehabilitate the individual units, improve the security for the residents, and improve infrastructure and grounds on the property. They're currently working with Fairfield Crime Free, excuse me, I think we need to move forward one. They are currently working with the city's Crime Free Multifamily Housing Program personnel to analyze their procedures in an attempt to create the highest possible property management. They are proposing to expand their onsite services, develop stronger relationships with neighboring churches, and they're adding city affordability covenants to 38 units. For this property to continue quality housing, it must receive upgrade and comprehensive Midpen is requesting the Housing Authority refinance the existing former RDA loan and issue a new loan. In return, the Housing Authority will require Midpen to provide permanent supportive housing units, provide case management for those services, and to maintain the highest quality property management possible for this property. This project will improve the housing stock. It will engage private sector partners to create permanent supportive housing units and contribute to meeting the expenditure requirements of Senate Bill 341. The next project I'd like to talk about is The Vines at Tabor. As I am sure the council is aware, this property has been challenging for the city for a number of years. Its poor management has negatively impacted the quality of life in the North Texas Street area, and to address the poor management and attempt to reverse disincentive in the area, the city revoked the use permit on the property and petitioned Solano Court for the appointment of a receiver. In addition, they brought in an experienced investor who was interested in purchasing the property, rehabilitating the units, and installing the highest-quality property manager who will turn the property around. The city is using a carrot-and-stick approach for this project. The carrot is a deferred loan in the amount of $400,000, deferred for the term of the affordability period, and the stick is various requirements imposed upon the buyer. The Housing Authority will provide financial assistance to the project, will impose limits on the ability of the property be flipped, impose property management requirements, and will partner with Solano County to provide case management services for the residents. The proposed new buyer will enroll the property in the city's Crime Free Multifamily Property Program, invest close to $1 million in rehabilitation to the property, and the sale will ensure the city has repaid most of the costs associated with installing the receiver and prepping the property for sale. To recap my presentation, both of these projects will result in an upgrade to the city's housing stock. They will strengthen partnerships that will benefit the community, and they will create permanent supportive housing units and implement the city's homeless strategy. In regards to Sunset Creek, staff is requesting the Housing Authority Board approve a loan in the amount of $1.275 million, amend and restate the existing loan, and agree to subordinate its interest to the private first lender. And in regards to 200 East Tabor, staff is requesting the Housing Authority Board approve a loan in the amount of $400,000 and an MOU with Solano County to provide services for the residents of the permanent supportive housing units. This concludes my presentation, as I'm sure there may be folks here who would like to speak on the item or will be available to answer questions.
Any comments or questions for Brian? Do have one request to speak, Card. Any comments? Okay. Okay. So, Brian, if you'd just stand by. Debbie Tavy, please. Would you come forward?
Good evening, Mayor Price, council members, and city staff. I'm Debbie Tavy, and I'm the president and CEO of the Fairfield-Sassoon Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also the interim CEO of the North Texas Business Association. Tonight, I am here speaking on behalf of the North Texas Street Business Association. We are here in support of the Resolution HA 20175-05, approving the loan amount for $400,000 for the rehabilitation of the property located at 200 East Tabor. The revitalization of this property would be beneficial not only to the neighborhood but to the businesses on North Texas Street. With this, with the elimination of blight, we think that it'll also be more attractive for some possible new investors, and it'll really help the outlay or the look of the North Texas Street business community in that neighborhood particularly. And as all of you know, we absolutely need housing. We need housing, and this is a great opportunity for us to give our homeless community that is looking at reentry into our workforce, the housing they need to become successful. So from the North Texas Street point of view, this is a win-win for all, and we absolutely support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And our second speaker will be Mr. Anthony Russo, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, really quickly, I want to echo Debbie's support for this, both these projects, actually. These are creative ways to develop affordable housing for people who would probably never be able to access it. You're talking folks in the 30% to 40% of median income, which are almost impossible to get any kind of market or somewhat below-market rate housing that we offer in Fairfield, because our affordable housing only gets to about 65% to 70%. I've just been asked to be on the board of the new mission in Solano, and I'm seriously considering it because we do need to provide what I call supportive housing, which is wraparound services, getting people into an environment where they can be, receive the services they need so they can get back into society. These are important. The other thing that's happening is when the legislature comes back, Governor Brown is introducing potentially three bills regarding affordability in this state, none of which will probably do anything, but the third one would penalize cities who don't meet housing goals. And it's very difficult for any city to meet housing goals down into the ranges of 30% to 40% of median income, and that's difficult to do, and it's amazing that you're able to do it in this situation. So I would encourage you to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. I don't have any other requests to speak, Cards. So we'll bring Brian back up, and Laura, if you'd stand by, please. Councilman Moy, please. You had some questions, some concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please be patient with me. This is a really couple of important projects with some really important questions. First, why don't we start with Sunset Creek Apartments? Are those already certified as crime-free?
They are.
They are. And what was done to ensure they're crime-free? How do we follow up with that?
Chief, you want to come and talk a little about the crime-free program?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Hi.
So the question again, I want to make sure I have the question correct.
I want to know what's done after a place is certified as crime-free?
So we enter-
What do you do to maintain that, to ensure that there's nothing going on in there?
So we enter in, so first, we provide the training, and it is voluntary to those who want to participate in the crime-free multi-housing program. We provide the training to management staff, they understand the program, and then we help them implement it on their property. Basically, the main hook, if you will, for the property owners that they have the- Basically, the main hook, if you will, for the property owners, that they have the tenants sign an addendum to the lease agreement. And basically, with the addendum, that allows them -- they are allowing the property owner and management to have a relationship with the police department, where we can share call information with the management of the apartment complex, so that they know proactively if there are any police-generated calls, because it is possible that the police could come, for instance, in the middle of the night, and an apartment manager may not know that. But we are sharing that information with the, again, management staff, and then it's up to them to enforce it. And basically, the addendum also says that virtually any violation of the criminal law -- of criminal law could lead to eviction. And so, the -- on the management side, their obligation to stay a part of the Crime Free Multi-Housing Program is that they have to follow through and enforce their rules. We don't evict people, that is up to the management.
Do you check -- does the police department then check to see if there are evictions, so that they are following through?
Yes. So, one of our crime prevention specialists, that's one of his ancillary duties, is to continually review calls for service at Crime Free Multi-Housing properties and have that ongoing relationship. We had, in the past, staffed that with a police officer, and our hope is that as our staffing increases, we will again have a police officer doing that full-time. So, not only are they reviewing the data, but that police officer will be inspecting and going to the properties on a regular basis.
And do you keep those numbers, so we could ask for them in a public document, how many people have been evicted for the crime-free, you know? Do you guys keep it?
I don't believe we keep it specifically, good, because it is a civil action between the management and owner and the tenant.
So, we don't really know whether they're crime-free, do we?
They have an obligation to enforce their addendum, and if we are producing calls for service, and we approach the manager and say, "You are continuing to have a problem here, you need to do something about this," they have to show that they're either working on the problem, or they're no longer eligible to be part of Crime Free Multi-Housing Program.
Okay. I just, you know, I see this not just -- I'm not just talking about here in Fairfield, but I see around with government that, you know, we like to say something's crime-free, but I always wonder, you know, how we know, you know? So, I appreciate your answers, being honest. Thank you.
Councilman Moye, I can respond in part, but when the Crime Free Multi-Housing Ordinance was first adopted by the city of Fairfield, I received a number of calls from tenants who were being evicted because of the actions of their grandchildren, and the property managers were doing what they said they would do. We agreed, and all the tenants agreed, when they read the documents, that if you violate any provision of this, you may be evicted. And it was tough dealing with some of those grandparents, particularly elderly ladies, who were beside themselves, because they weren't aware of what their grandchildren were doing. So, it can be very effective.
Okay. Thank you. Back to Sunset Creek Apartments. Is there currently case management supportive housing there?
No, there aren't any permanent supportive housing units there. However, they do have a resident services manager that does provide other services to their residents.
Okay. And how many in this, if we give them another loan? The other one's never been paid off, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, we would not ask for another penny for -- until the end of another, what, 2075?
Seventy-two, fifty-five years.
Seventy-two. So, I'll be dead, but that's okay. And so, then we ask them to pay it off, or is this a forgivable loan?
It's not a forgivable loan. The interest and the principal on both notes will be due at the end of the affordability period, which is in 55 years.
And is there a reason why we wouldn't have the initial loan paid off now and then get a second loan to them?
So, the current loan is what's called a residual receipts payment loan, which means if there's any money left over after they've paid all of their operating expenses, that money's expected to go to us. Unfortunately, since 1996, there hasn't been, but I will say that this type of loan is commonplace and typical in the nonprofit housing industry. And so, we wouldn't be the only city that would have this type of a loan with a nonprofit housing developer.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And so, what is this -- the supportive housing going to look like at Sunset Creek Apartments?
Well, you know, we can ask them to come on up here and speak to that.
That would be great.
I'm Dominique Cohen, and I'm the director of our supportive housing department. And specifically, what supportive housing would look like at this -- for these four units is, we'd have a skilled case manager with experience working with supportive housing clients. So, the first thing we do is, we assess the population, we look at the needs of the individual household, we then create a plan to address whatever their issues, which have destabilized housing in the past. Those things sometimes are going to be financial issues, sometimes it's substance and alcohol abuse. And there's a lot of times, there are a lot of health-related issues. And so, we address -- we create a plan, and we address those. Our case manager, we expect initially will spend a significant amount of time doing what we call rapport building and bonding with those four. You know, generally speaking, people who have histories of homelessness have histories of not trusting society. I mean, they're homeless, and I can understand that. So, part of our motto is, is that we try to create a bond with the individual, which will allow us to serve them better. Essentially, we have a number of partners that we also bring in, community-based organizations, and for folks who are entitled to social services, we also seek to partner with local social services agencies also.
Okay. And so, is there anybody who lives on-site 24 hours, so in case somebody has issues?
We have a staff person that lives on-site, and I will let our property management person speak a little bit more about who that person is, but generally speaking, on all of our sites, we have an on-site manager.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, so I was -- wanted to know, speak to the person who's on-site, or who was -- I want to know what they do there.
Can we do identify yourself, please?
Scott Carey, I'm with MidPen Housing.
Hi, Scott.
Hello. So, the on-site manager is a separate job. It's an individual who lives there. Most of the time, the individual also works there. In this particular situation, it's maintenance, which is helpful for us, because if there's a maintenance need after hours, we have somebody that lives on-site. So, their job function is to walk the property after hours. There's a reporting method back to us to let us know if there's lights out, if they see any sort of issues in the property, vandalism, trip hazards. They'll report back to the manager, and then the manager will address those needs.
I see. Can you tell me what happens if there's an emergency with a human being? For instance, with people who have spent some time on the streets and come out and become -- trying to become stabilized, as you said, may have some addiction issues, mental health issues. What happens in that situation if somebody has an issue with their mental health, let's say?
So, our site staff does go through some general training as far as being able to recognize if somebody is decompensating. It's minimal training, but it's for them to be able to identify those issues, and then they would let the management know, and management would work with services to get that person help.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions, colleagues? Seeing none?
Yeah, now I'm ready to go to the other.
Okay.
If you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. I spoke to the city manager about these questions, I think he can attest to it. We spent some time on it. So, on this one, I guess we're staff -- oh, hi, Brian. So, on this one, we have a $400,000, actually, it's more like a grant, right? Because we call it a loan, but if they make it through the 55 years, then we're really giving them money. Is that right?
If they meet all of the requirements set out in the regulatory agreement, then yes, we will forgive the principal -- repayment on the principal and interest.
So, $400,000?
Right.
Okay. And on this one, we have an MOU with the county for 10 years, it looks like. And in that case, if something goes wrong with that, then how did we come up with that $1,412 per unit, per month, to do wraparound services if we have to -- if the city of Fairfield has to get in the social services arena?
City staff conducted market research and reached out directly to service providers and inquired as to the cost of those services.
Okay. So, I did the math on this, and if for some reason the county, you know, decided not to -- the taxpayers of this city would pay $3.7 million over the 55 years to do this social service work. And so, I think that we need to -- I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I think we need to make sure that we know how we're going to pay for that. If something goes wrong with the MOU with the county, I think we need to be prepared, because the worst thing that you can do with people who are in need of wraparound services, and I want to know what that means to you, and what that means in this situation, is leave them without those services, and leave them without somebody there to help them. It's tragic.
City manager?
So, I just want to clarify one point. The -- in terms of our obligation to provide permanent supportive housing, so we have the agreement with the county.
Yes.
If for some reason that agreement is terminated, the city doesn't have an obligation to provide those 30 -- the units that are at the 30% of area median income for 55 years as permanent supportive housing. We would have an obligation to make sure they're available to people who are at 30% of AMI, but we do not have to make sure that they're permanent supportive housing. So, what we were talking about earlier was, if the county were to back out, our goal would be, obviously, to try to transition these individuals into situations where they can receive supportive housing, so we wouldn't have to bear that cost on an ongoing basis.
Right. But when we're talking as a council about trying to get supportive housing, I want us to understand how much that costs. If we're -- if we really want to do that supportive housing, then it's $3.7 million. And so, I just thought, we need to know that's what that is. And what is that supportive -- wraparound services is what -- some people think different things when they think about wraparound. I think about something very different than others. What is it in this case?
Well, it's defined by the McCann v. Entour Act, but I would rather have the representative from Solano County, who's inexperienced in providing wraparound services, come on up and speak to you on what that means.
And so, the two people we have here are this director of Health and Social Services, Jerry Huber, and Sandra -- and I apologize if I messed up your last name, Sandra Sins. And I just -- the comment I just wanted to make is, both of them have been tremendous partners. Jerry has been a very willing ear to a lot of my frustrations.
I think I worked for the city, Dave.
That's what I was told.
But they've been really good in terms of understanding that we want to move into this issue and address the issue of homelessness, and I just want to commend both of them for their openness, their responsiveness to us, particularly when I come back and bring issues that are raised by council as they talk about this item. So, I just want to say thank you.
If I might just add, Jerry, before you begin, thank you both very much for being here.
Yes.
This is a long time coming, and it's just thrilling to see the city and the county working together to make meaningful change for those who are most in need in our community.
Absolutely. Great to see you. Hi, Jerry.
Hey, how are you? Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and city council members. This is exciting for me, because in the two and a half years, almost three years that I've been here, basically, we're seeing this synergy, where the city, the county, faith community, all the communities coming together. Actually, living in Fairfield, I'm glad that Fairfield is taking the lead on this. We really want to talk about a little bit on 200 East Tabor, in terms of what our wraparound approach of services are. So, I have Sandra Sins, our deputy director here. And what -- yeah, let's -- yeah, okay. And Tracy, to talk a little bit about what the services are going to be.
Thank you. The services that we're talking about are essentially for four designated units for mental health clients. These are services that we would be providing without cost to the city. We intend to provide supportive housing case management through some of our existing programs, so we have some full-service partnerships, and we also have other case management programs. And those, we would be identifying clients that are suitable for that kind of housing arrangement, and making sure that they had the supportive services that they need to be successful.
That would be like Caminor?
A combination. It could be county staff or Caminor staff, or a combination.
Okay. And are you thinking that the people who would come into these units would have already been stabilized at a place like Heather House, or somewhere else, a board and care, before they are put into this housing? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, definitely. They would need to have some degree of being able to live independently. So, whether that's something like Heather House, or a board and care, or a room and board, or having previously lived independently, but maybe not quite so successfully, but with some supports, they could.
Okay. And so, how often would the case managers see these people?
Our high-need clients generally are seen two to three times a week. If they're in a -- in sort of a crisis state, they would be seen more often, and when they're doing well, they would be seen less often. So, it's just kind of as the needs drive.
All right. Thank you very much. Really enjoy having you here. It is great to work with you.
We're excited about the partnership.
Yeah. Thank you.
And Councilman Moye, for benefit of our audience members who may not know what your role is in all of this, aside from being a policymaker on this city council, would you explain that very briefly, please?
Yes, real briefly. I stepped into a job. I am executive director of Heather House, and we do have contract with the county, and we have mental health clients who live with us, some dual-diagnosed, and so, I have some -- actually, a lot of experience living and working with them. Yeah. Yeah, so, that's why I ask so many questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And colleagues, any other comments? Seeing none? Thank you both very much.
I just want to say, before we move off of this, that this makes my heart sing right here, because I don't know how much you know about the time and energy and focus that our city manager and this city council have put into making this day a reality. This is progress right here. This is progress, because we do not, as the city of Fairfield, want to have people living on the streets of this city and that be considered normal for them. That is not normal, and we never should look at it as that. But people have to go somewhere. This is a critical component of our long-term strategy that Laura Snyder talked about earlier. I want to congratulate the city manager, my colleagues, the county of Solano, hello, you're in the building, because this is the only way we can do it on a sustained basis. This is the only way we can do -- this partnership is the only way this is going to not only work, but it's going to last. And it's going to, most importantly, help people who really actually need this help. So, I just want to say to everyone, job well done, and thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Picaro, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I've met with Jerry before, I know. I have a tremendous amount of respect for him, and his knowledge base, and I've probably sat up here in this dais a million times and said mental health is the number-one issue in this country, so it's really good to hear that these people are going to get the support they need in these houses, so, thank you.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have any comments you'd like to share, too, from your extensive background?
Well, you know, just real quickly, I know it's probably hard for you to hear, but I want to thank the county, and probably the biggest thing is, is that the public know that we have been working-- that we have been working with the county, with the, with their officials and our board and their board a long time. And it hasn't been published, and sometimes it looks like we're just spinning our wheels, but we're not. This is just the beginning, and there's more to come. You know, dealing with everything from transitional housing to Mission Solano. And we understand, we also understand it's going to be expensive. We understand it's an issue, but we're going to get there. And I just want to say thank you to Jerry and the counterparts from the county because like Pam said, it's so very, very important that we establish a partnership. And I just want to say thanks, and we'll move on. Thank you.
And then I'd like to extend our appreciation also to Laura and Brian for your presentation. It's a landmark, and what a difference it's going to make. So, Mr. City Manager, can we take both items?
I would each one separately just because they're separate projects. So the first item is Resolution HA two oh, two oh one seven dash zero four. And so that'd be the first one up regarding the Sunset Creek project.
Is there a motion to approve? It's been moved by Councilman Vicaro. Is there a second place? Councilman Bertani, all in favor? And we have to do a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Price? Councilman? Vice Mayor Tim?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertani?
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Oh, Councilman Vicaro, we didn't get you.
Councilmember Vicaro. Councilmember Vicaro?
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We turn then to the second resolution, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, Resolution HA twenty seventeen dash zero five, which is approval of the financial assistance for the Vines project. Motion to approve. It'll be in order.
It's moved.
Been moved by the, Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilman Moy. Roll call, please.
Mayor Price? Vice Mayor Tim?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Vicaro?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We will reconvene the meeting of the Fairfield City Council. In due business, please. Item number four. Madam Clerk.
City Council discussion and minute action to select a voting delegate for the twenty seventeen League of California Cities Annual Business Meeting, September fifteenth, twenty seventeen.
And our presenter will be Laura Snyder. Again, please. Laura?
So again, good evening, council. It is time for the annual League of California Cities Business Meeting, and you all are a board member and therefore get a vote. So we are looking this evening for you all to appoint a voting delegate and possibly two alternates. The person would need to be able to attend on the afternoon of Friday, September the fifteenth, in Sacramento. And we hope that the person could also attend actually the full business meeting, which is the thirteenth through the fifteenth.
Let me survey my colleagues. How many of you are going to be participating in Sacramento?
And Rick is going to accept.
I'll be there too, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, you're interested in going too, aren't you?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay. So we'll have two, and our voting delegate will be by motion, Councilman Vicaro.
So we do, we would appreciate a motion on this.
It's moved.
Been moved by Councilman Moy.
With, with Rick as the primary and Council, and Vice Mayor Tim as the alternate?
Yep. Seconded by Councilman Bertani. Roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Price? Vice Mayor Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Vicaro?
Yes.
carries unanimously. We turn then to item number five, please. Madam Clerk.
Resolution twenty seventeen one ninety-three of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving an agreement for severance with Randy Finn and a modification to the Series One Hundred, executive management benefits to increase uniform allowance.
And our human resources director, Allison Picard, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Is this on? Can you hear me? So it's with great pleasure that I'm bringing this action to you tonight that requires your specific approval of the compensation package relate, or pieces of the compensation package related to the appointment of the chief, which the city manager announced last week. And the compensation package pieces involve a uniform allowance adjustment of eight fifty to twelve fifty annually, which is equivalent to what the Managers Association receives. And the second element that's specific is a severance agreement, which would last for a term of three years and provide six months' salary and remaining on our health benefits plan for that term if exercised. The full agreement is in your packet. In summary, I think you know the chief has over twenty-five years of law enforcement experience, has been with the city since two thousand twelve. So resident of Fairfield, and staff very enthusiastically endorse and recommend that you approve this resolution.
Any comments or questions for Allison? Seeing none. Entertain a motion then to approve Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one nine three. It's been moved by Councilman Vicaro, seconded by Councilman Bertani. All, and roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Price? Vice Mayor Tim?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy? Councilmember Vicaro?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Allison, thank you very much. We turn then to item number six, please. Madam Clerk.
I may just quickly interject, let me just say welcome onboard, Randy. We are extraordinarily excited for you to be our chief. And I just want to share with the council the absolute delight that I had to make this announcement in front of the department last Thursday. It was absolutely overwhelming to be in the atrium, surrounded by sworn men and women of this city, and just absolutely feel their joy and pride to have you onboard, chief. So I'm excited, I'm delighted to work with you, and I'm looking forward to a long-term relationship with you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Item number eight, please. Madam Clerk.
Six. Resolution twenty seventeen one ninety-four of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving and ratifying an agreement between the City of Fairfield and Cannon Station LLC, subordinating a deed of trust to facilitate the construction financing of the Cannon Station Development Project.
And our presenter will be our city attorney, Greg Stupanisich, please.
Yes, Mayor and the council. Before you is a resolution approving an agreement between the city and Cannon Station regarding the subordination of a deed of trust that we currently have on a piece of property as part of the North Bay Treatment Plant that was sold to Cannon Station by both the City of Asheville and the City of Fairfield back in twenty sixteen. At that point, that actual loan was made subordinate to any financing that would be required for any community facilities district, but did not provide for a subordination of the loan, which means it comes second after the particular loan that's being subordinated to any construction financing. And the, at this point in time, Vacville has, was paid off with respect to its loan, and we have a balance of approximately one point five million dollars left on the, I should say, the purchase price, rather, that we have entered into with Cannon Station. So the issue came up last week that there was a need to have a closing of the construction financing for this very important project. And the, the bank providing the construction financing demanded that this loan must be subordinate to the construction financing. So our agreement, that purchase-sale agreement entered into in twenty sixteen did not address this type of circumstance. In order to facilitate the, this project proceeding forward to, really to the benefit to the community and to the city also, we have entered into a structured agreement here, which I'll outline to you, that ultimately leaves the council with the authority to decide whether or not this particular loan by the city should be subordinated to the construction loan. So what we have provided for here in this structure is that prior to the closing, the borrower Cannon Station would pay off the loan to the city. We'd release the deed of trust. That would then allow the construction loan to be first. However, this matter would come before you this evening for a determination as to whether or not you would allow the subordination to take place. If you decided not to, then we would hold on to the full payoff of the loan. And, but if you approved the subordination, there would be a payoff, or a partial payoff of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the remaining balance of approximately one point five million dollars. And so there would be some pay down to the loan, which was not otherwise required. And then the remaining one point two million dollar balance would be subordinate to the construction loan, which is a really requirement for the project to be financed to proceed with construction. So that's before you tonight. The one thing I will add is that we were contemplating this was going to, this construction loan was going to close on Friday. And apparently now it's going to close on Thursday. So if you proceed with this transaction this evening, the approval of the resolution, we'd also want to add that we may need to make additional changes to the documentation here just to reflect the closing date of the loan, which would be this Thursday. And so with that recommendation, we would suggest you open it up to any comments from either Cannon Station or anyone else who wants to speak on this, and then if you come back for deliberation by the council.
I do have one request to speak card. No, I'm sorry, I don't. I don't have any request to speak cards on this one. Any comments or questions for the city attorney? Okay. I'll entertain a motion then to approve Resolution two thousand seventeen dash one nine four. It's been moved by Councilman Vicaro. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Bertani?
And that would be also subject, subject to any required modifications to the documentation that's been approved by both the city manager and the city attorney.
With that understanding. Roll call, vote, please.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy? Councilmember Vicaro?
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We turn then to item number seven, please. Madam Clerk.
Discussion and consideration of Resolution twenty seventeen one ninety-five of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, establishing a policy regarding the reservation of tee times at the junior rates.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. And this item is, came about based on a request from a citizen, asked the city and the city council to consider allowing youth to make tee times at our golf courses. And prior to making that decision, the council asked that the item be agendized for discussion by the Golf Advisory Board. As you know, the Golf Advisory Board was formed approximately twenty years ago by the city council, and members are appointed by the mayor and approved by the council to serve as a policy advisory body to the city, staff, operators, and council on golf course matters. So they're kind of our subject matter experts. Not only are they our subject matter experts, it's appropriate with respect to golf that those folks are very passionate about golf. I can say confidently that there's members on the Golf Advisory Board who are as passionate about youth golf as anyone in the community. They do as much or more than anybody to promote youth golf, and youth golf is successful under their guidance. The consideration this item was extremely timely for the Golf Advisory Board in that the board had been engrossed in the process starting in December, January, to update the golf course policy manual. That manual was about twenty years old. It was time. They recognized that. And tee times, youth golf, all the policies related to golf are embodied in that document, and they were about halfway through the process. So they had their sleeves pulled up and were working on it already. The Golf Advisory Board met on July thirteenth to consider this item, and I'm pleased to present, basically turn over the mic to the Golf Advisory Board. We've got Chairman Dave Baker here, and we have board members Hummel and Stewart, who would like to present to you their thoughts and their recommendations. So I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, George. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is David Baker. I'm the chair of your Golf Advisory Board, and with me today are Carol Hummel and Leslie Stewart, who are members of the board. We appreciate the opportunity to provide advice to the council on the question of modifying the golf course manual to allow reservations for tee times for junior golfers paying the reduced junior rate. The Advisory Board met on July thirteenth and had this matter on the agenda. We had a very good discussion, including a public input by Mr. Tom Nelson and other members of the public. After a thorough discussion, the board decided to recommend to this council that we maintain the status quo for the time being. We determined that this is a classic situation of if it ain't broke, don't fix it. The youth golf program here in Fairfield is one of the most successful in the area. Carol will have more to say on that in just a minute. Junior golf is up twenty-seven percent this year over last year, despite some, as you all have probably heard in earlier reports just on the status of your contracts, that despite the heavy rains and so forth, youth golf is up twenty-seven percent on our golf courses this year. Rick Sezna, who is the general manager for the Kemper Sports, provided input to our meeting and pointed out to us that two of the youth clinics that the golf courses put on were sold out this year, a very popular program for them. Now, I said that I, we recommend the status quo for the time being. As George said, your advisory board is continuing to address revisions to the golf course manual this year, and we will continue to consider the question of tee times for junior golfers. However, the issue of allowing junior golfers to make tee times raises several very important questions, which we clearly did not have time to consider in our meeting last, last week. These include, for the purposes of this issue, what is a junior golfer? Right now, it's defined as five to eighteen years old. Obviously, having tee times for seven-year-olds is very different than having tee times for sixteen-year-olds. So having a decision in the policy manual as to what the right age should be for such a program. We also need to consider what the restrictions might be on which days of the week. Right now, the youth program is available on a standby basis seven days a week, afternoon. There are many other issues that I won't go through tonight. But I do want to allow Carol to present some information to the council that she put together as research before our meeting that I think further makes the point that it ain't broke, so we don't need much fixing. Carol?
Down to the short-person level. Okay. I'm sorry. And get the mouse over here. Since I'd rather have you look at this than at me. So we'll have this up here in a minute. Okay. I was able to talk to, you know, all the competitive golf courses in the area because we wanted to see where Fairfield stacked up compared to the other cities to make sure that we did have, sorry about that, an excellent program, and if there was room for any improvement. I did identify myself to the golf courses and in most cases talked to the, you know, the head golf pro. And they were happy to share and talk about how they were doing as well. I think if you'll look at our junior rate for seventeen and under at afternoon, daily, of course, it's eleven dollars, and which is clearly the best rate of our surrounding golf courses. And I think we should all be proud for that. And I, you know, I applaud whoever made that decision many years ago because obviously it pays off for people who are trying to learn the game. And then if you go to Youth On Course, which this council, I believe, approved, you know, a couple of years ago, which, for people who don't know what that is, children who sign up with the Northern California Golf Association can pay five dollars afternoon at our courses and walk. And Northern California Golf pays the difference, the six dollars, monthly to Fairfield. So really, there's no revenue lost, but obviously children are greatly advantaged. And we have that effective at noon daily. Hidden Brook Semi-Private Course does not. If you look at Chardonnay, on weekdays, it's one, and weekends, it's two. So, you know, there's various ways that people implement that. Advanced tee times, this was the issue we were charged with looking into. So we do not have advanced tee times in all. So we do not have advanced tee times, and I'll go into, you know, why that is. Hidden Brook does with a paying adult, so they know someone's coming and they've got a credit card. Chardonnay does not do advanced tee times at all. Napa Kennedy does, and the gentleman said, "We do it, but quite honestly, there's only been two that he knew of in the last 12 months." And Blue Rock Springs does not have advanced tee times unless you're playing with your parent, and that's it. So, you know, right now, we look like we have a great program compared to the other cities. Now, one of the things is availability, and it was meant, we wanted to see, well, how, you know, often can kids come out and play? And what they normally do is either look online, and this is a screenshot of what when you go to FairfieldGolf.com, and I looked, you know, at 11 o'clock this morning, and these were the open tee times that children could play. And I do want to say, you know, adults do come and take these tee times, but on the same standby basis, if a child is there waiting, you know, with his $5 or $11 rate, and an adult comes, we asked Rich Sesna about that, and he says the policy is that first come, first served. So if a child is already there and four adults come, whoever's first gets it. So, you know, children are not being turned away. This was, again, today. There's a lot of available tee times. So if I was a parent or, you know, a teenager, I know I can go out today because I see there's quite a few at noon. And this was, I wanted to see what a weekend was, and I pulled a screenshot a couple of weeks ago when we started looking into this. And obviously, there's tee times on weekends, too. So, you know, the question is, is there demand and is there lack of product to sell? And yes, there's demand. Yes, we have a great program. And yes, there's available tee times every day I looked. So that was kind of what's going on there. And another fun thing, because we do promote youth golf, and Leslie will tell you a lot about what we have been doing, but there's a new program coming next year, and I'm really excited about it. Vice Mayor Tim has been working with me on this for over a year. We have Mark from Eleven. So Eleven has come in to be our 501(c), and we're going to get at least 70 a year to start, children from Eleven out to the golf course at Paradise for introduction to golf. And let's say seven of them are good, we'll keep them going, and each year, get another group. And what we'll have is children going into high school that can already play golf, and obviously, the golfers have been supporting the high schools, and Leslie will tell you a little bit about that. But I will come see you in January because I'm going to need some help fundraising, and I bet you guys are pretty good at that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Leslie Stewart has been very active in the area of youth golf. She, along with other members of her ladies' golf club, work very closely with junior golfers, particularly with young girls. And she's had extensive experience with the current standby space available program that's now in place. Let me just parenthetically say also, she hates when I say this, but she's also the best golfer on the Golf Advisory Board.
Good evening, everybody. As he said, I'm not going to talk about the best golfer part, but I do work a lot with the children in our community. It's a very special place in my heart. And I've actually been very impressed with the fact that I can take these children out and work with them on the courses. They've been very accommodating. And I'm not only working with the courses here in Fairfield, but I go around to other places as well, and I've found it's been pretty easy to call ahead and say that I'm coming or to bring a youth out. But I do want to say, when I work with the younger kids, I'm working with kids, very small, six. I even work with Napa College, so I'm working with kids that are 17, 18, 19 years old as well. And it's been very easy to walk onto the course, to get them out and to work with them on the driving range, and then to take them out on the course and teach them etiquette. Oftentimes, I'll walk, and I'll not even play with them, just so I can teach them as we're going along and say, "Can I go out for three or four holes?" And just walk with the kids. And we might do, you know, they've got to understand how to move forward and how to learn the game and how to understand etiquette and pace of play. So often, I won't play, but I'll, we might even just play best ball. So they all hit a ball, they all get a chance to hit, but we're all moving forward, and we're having fun. One of the big concerns we would have is about the younger kids going out by themselves. They need to be accompanied by an adult. Or I have a junior who's 14, who's got a better index than I do. She can go out by herself, and she can contact her parents when she's close to finishing and say, you know, "Come pick me up." We'd be okay with that. So those are the types of things that we feel we need to review. We don't want a nine-year-old being dropped off the course and out on their own necessarily playing the course. So we're not going to drop the subject. We just need a little more time to figure out what would be best for the children as well as for the golf courses. I want to say that first and foremost, we have two great golf courses here in Fairfield, which is huge for us, and the bottom line is that we keep those courses. As courses are being closed all around us, we want to make sure that our course stays solid first, and then we're focused on these kids. Through our Rancho Ladies, we're just a golf club. We don't have to do anything. We're out there playing golf, having a good time. But our ladies come together every year. We do a big tournament, and those funds go to support the high schools in the area. We've bought golf bags, we give walking carts to the girls, and we donate it. These ladies have stepped up and made donations to the girls, giving golf clothes and shoes and things that they wouldn't have without us. And that's just one of the groups that I'm in. I'm in another ladies' group, and we do the same thing. We have a Little Sisters program. We're bringing up these girls and mentoring through the program. So I spend a lot on the time on the golf course with a lot of children, a lot of people, and I've been very impressed with the programs and the way they're available. I'm working closely with Youth On Course, along with Linda Donahue. We take kids out on a regular basis, and we find that the program is working really well. So I just want to, I want you to know that we, I think we're doing great things for our youth, and we're going to see a lot more golfers coming up through our program. It's great that we have these two courses available for them to play on, which is awesome. And we're going to continue to work with our youth. And again, as a Golf Advisory Board, we're not going to abandon the issue. We just need a little more time to talk through the specifics, and as we update the policies, we'll definitely be looking at how we can make our youth program even better here in Fairfield.
Thank you, Mayor and council. That concludes our report to you. Again, to summarize, we recommend that you maintain the status quo as far as reservation for tee times for youth golf at the moment. Any, we'll be glad to address any questions you might have.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Moy, please.
So I just wanted to, pardon me, verify again. So if a youth is out on, ready to go, and you have four adults show up, that young person's not going to get bumped for those adults? Is that?
If those adults don't have a tee time, you know, if they just show up off the street, first come, first served at that point, if the youth is already there. Typically, the, you know, the afternoon, again, we're only talking about afternoon.
Right.
So if a youth there has already checked in, they're ready to go, four adults show up with no tee, no advanced tee time, then the youth goes out, then the adults go out behind the youth.
Okay. All right. And how soon do you think you'd have a policy? Could the policy come before the whole update of, you know, the whole thing? I mean, could you do the policy for the youth prior to updating the entire? I guess George is going to come up and answer that. Uh-huh.
My short answer as the chair is we could, if we made that a bigger priority than it is right now, given the fact that it seems the youth program as it is right now is moving forward. So just as part of considering the rest of the policy manual and the other work we've had to do around there, we, we want to do it kind of in order. So we don't consider it a major priority at this point, but as we concluded in our discussions the other day, there, and as I, my earlier comment, there are a lot of details about this we'd have to work out if we wanted to recommend changing the current policy.
Right. I understand that. I appreciate all of the work, and your report was really thorough, and your work with the youth. I know that when Pam and I interviewed you, we all talked about youth golf and how important it was for us, and we really appreciate that. So, and maybe I think George might have something to say, too.
I think Chairman Baker covered it pretty well. Could prioritize things, but the definitions and the issues seem to be intertwined with other golf course manual elements. So it would be our preference to conclude this process, integrate them as one, and conclude it. We expect that to be done later this year before, you know, we're getting, beginning into the winter months here in the next few months, so it'll be done very soon. And could any, the golf course manual updates could be implemented in the next, next play year?
So for the next play year, because this year, we're getting ready to go back to school in a few weeks, so, okay. Like to hear what my colleagues think. Thank you.
Councilmember Bertani, please.
Mr. Mayor, do we have any speaker cards?
We have one. And we'll get the speaker.
Okay. I'd like to just reserve my comments then until after the speaker. Thank you.
Hold yours. Okay. Vice Mayor Tim, do you want to hold your comments, too, please?
Yeah, no, I'll go ahead and, I'll wait.
Okay. Thank you very much. And our request to speak card is Tom Nelson, please. Tom?
As Mr. Nelson comes to the mic, I want to thank you all for an impressive and very thorough presentation. You sound like you know what you're doing, which is what impressed me when we were in the interview. So I continue to thank you for your service to this city, and I'm really looking forward to your continued work and all the progress we're going to make. Thank you for caring about these kids out there.
Tom, you're on, please.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Tom Nelson, and I'll try to keep this short, but to begin, I, too, want to thank everybody in the advisory board for what they do. I've never said that we have a horrible program. I think we have a great program. We have great volunteers. But my question, of course, is can we make it better? And I think we can. My good friend, Rich Sesna, reported to the Golf Advisory Board that 66% of the times after 12 noon go unused, and I think that was substantiated by one of the slides up here. Let me be clear, that's two out of three tee times after 12 noon go unused. But he argues that the kids and their parents should not be allowed to reserve these tee times in advance. Why? Mr. Sesna argues that when kids are seen on the golf course, no matter how good and fast they play, they are perceived by some adults, not all adults, but some, who, to be slowing the pace of play, and that's death to a golf course, according to Rich Sesna. This perception, even though false, will keep that adult from returning to the golf course in the future, according to Mr. Sesna. Please note that I have emailed the audio clip of Mr. Sesna's exact words on the subject as he presented it to the Golf Advisory Board last week. So Mr. Sesna feels that all kids should suffer to appease some prejudiced adults. But there are adults that think seniors and women are slow, too. So should we not allow seniors and women to make tee times? Of course not. Mr. Sesna's argument, and I apologize, I can't find a better word for this, is just flat-out stupid. Although the Golf Advisory Board wants to study this further, my suggestion is to, was and is, to allow tee times at one of the golf courses so real data can be collected for the Golf Advisory Board. I agree 100% that this should be studied further. But you should be able to have really good data, not just the word of Mr. Sesna, in order to make a good, make good recommendations to this council. So Mr. Sesna allowing tee times at one course, he says that's impossible, but he gave no reasons to the Golf Advisory Board. So Mr. Martian and Mr. White and whoever else, maybe the Golf Advisory Board as well, but Mr. Sesna didn't give him, them any reason for this. Why is it impossible that we could make one of the golf courses allow tee times there and study the situation, see what happens to the revenue, see what happens to the behavior of play? And is that a bad idea? Mr. White? Or Mr. Martian?
Good evening. Is it a bad idea? I don't see why it is a bad idea or is not a bad idea. We've deferred, we've deferred to the experts. We believe the Golf Advisory Board, I believe that you discussed that matter with them and proposed that to them, and they've come back with their recommendation.
Mr. White, I'm sorry to interrupt, but unfortunately, the public comment was given before the discussion by the Golf Advisory Board, so there was actually no input by me in terms of per their discussion that wasn't allowed.
Tom, would you conclude, please?
I'm concluded. I was just wondering if you could give me the reason why we can't, why Mr. Sesna says and why the city says we can't do that, or could we do that?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the, I'm sorry, the president of the GAB to come back up, please? Let me just ask. I'm sorry, my voice is wanting to leave me. I know you guys aren't sorry, but, oh, well. So what about that suggestion? What's the problem with that?
Well, it cuts both ways.
Okay.
Right? So if you have an afternoon of open tee times, then you have plenty of opportunity for kids to walk on, on a standby space available basis and get on the golf course.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And as Mr. Nelson says, you could also have an opportunity to make tee times, except one of the things that we discussed, and Carol's actually more of an expert on this than I am, millennials, believe it or not, you know, they, they might decide at 11 o'clock that they want to play at 3 o'clock this afternoon and put a group of 12 people together, and that's for, you know, that's three groups right there.
Right.
That could potentially get filled up when it looks like it's, it's open in the afternoon, right? And so the, the, the open tee sheet cuts both ways. And as far as we were concerned, and Leslie particularly commented on it, that, that all the work that she's done with it, she's never had a problem getting on the course. We came down on the side, as I said earlier, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. It seems to be working very, very well right now, and so our recommendation was to maintain the status quo.
Okay. I did receive, I believe, six or seven emails today from residents asking that youth be able to make tee times. So I don't know how many people came to speak at your meeting. How many?
There were a total of 15 people there, probably. Mr. Nelson spoke, and, and then we had a back-and-forth dialogue with just the audience before we began our deliberations, and then, and then we began our discussion.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Can I ask just a quick question?
Tom, your time's, I'm sorry.
Okay. So we don't want really open dialogue on this at all.
Pamela?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I am not a golfer, but I'm going to become one, and I'm going to let you two ladies teach me how to do it, because it sounds like you're the instructors to have. But here's my point. Mr. Nelson, if I heard correctly, said that 60-something percent of these tee times go unused after 1 o'clock. Did you say that?
Actually, Mr. Sesna said that at the Golf Advisory Board meeting.
Okay. Is, do we know if the, so assuming for the sake of this discussion that that's true, if 60-some-odd percent of those tee times go unused, what's the big deal about making a tee time? Why don't you just go over to the golf course and play? Because probably, there's going to be something available. Or am I misunderstanding golfing culture and protocol and etiquette? Ms. Hummel, could you come back up, please?
Yes, please.
Am I missing something here? Is that not how it works?
No, you are not missing anything, Councilmember Bertani.
Well, thank you. That's for once this day.
My notes said 66% of the business is done before noon, because that's when the tee times are more expensive. And, you know, you'll pay $50 or $66. And afternoon, it starts to go down to 50 and 39. Now, millennials do, you know, us people that are, you know, whatever, baby boomers, we want our one week ahead, we have everything scheduled, but everyone else is pretty immediate. So they do sell quite a few of those tee times, and that would be a revenue hit if you had children, you know, blocking off the tee time. And what if they cancel? So it's $11 versus 39 or 50 or something like that. And since there are so many available, Rich was saying, you know, why would you, you know, block out tee times that you could? And it would be a lot of money. It might be $50,000 a year, you know?
My point is, if the bottom line is getting kids onto the green My point is, if the bottom line is getting kids onto the green to play in the afternoon, it sounds like if they want to do that, they'll probably be successful in going out and getting, if they just walk on.
Yes.
If, if the bottom line is making these golf courses available to our children, what I'm hearing you say is that the issue here is whether they can call ahead and do that. Is that the issue?
Uh, the issue...
Whether they can call ahead and do that? Because the space is there, they can play.
No, they can't.
Probably, okay, then I'm misunderstanding something then.
Let me, if I can just explain this a little bit. There's sixty-six percent of the tee times that go unused, but when kids want to get together, they have to coordinate rides because they don't drive if they're under sixteen, and the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, what they want to do is, just like adults, they want to call up their friends or their family, their parents, and they want to know that on two o'clock on Thursday, they have a reservation and they won't get bumped. What they were saying about not being bumped, they do get bumped. So, um, and if you want, I will show you video of that, of kids being bumped and being denied tee, the, the actual access to the tee. But the point is, is that if you want to get a group of four people together, and they're from different families, they have to be able to coordinate it and know that, hey, I've got a tee time at two o'clock and I'm going to make it. If they show up and there's three other just walk-ons, those kids will get bumped. And I have, um, audio of the head pro at, at Rancho Solano verifying this, and I can send that to you. So the key, key here is, is that it's a matter of being able to schedule the time and know that when you're going to get to the golf course, especially for people that are coming from out of town.
Tom, thank you. Any other comments?
Did that answer the question?
I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Real quick. Um, and I don't really need a response, okay? I just, you know, we've talked about kids playing golf, and, you know, I think the real issue here, I mean, I see like, having worked with the at-risk youth in our town for a long, long time, a lot of our kids can't even afford the eleven dollars. That's part of the problem. I mean, what I'd like to see somewhere down the road is maybe a program for our kids that can't afford golf clubs, don't have golf, have never played golf before. You know, at some point, it would be great. Yeah, that's fine.
Want to be on the committee?
Okay. Okay, there you go.
Just volunteer.
No, I think, yeah, I definitely would, Carol. I, you know, I think it's, it's really important because we have so many kids that are looking for outlets in so many different ways. Not all of them want to play golf, and maybe some of them do. And it would be great to get some kids, you know, off the streets, and, you know, either on the course or at the range or whatever, if they're interested in it. Not everybody is, but it would be great to try to do that. I mean, that's my vision down the road. I know right now, we're talking about tee times, something totally different, but, you know, I'm always looking at what, you know, what we can do to help the kids that can't afford the next step, so...
And that's what the Levin program will do.
Absolutely.
That will do. Councilwoman Vacaro, any other comments? Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have any comments?
No, I just, I just want to thank the, the Golf Advisory Board for putting in the time, and, you know, again, it just goes to show, kind of like the, uh, transitional housing and everything we've just talked about, it's just a lot of really good things going on that not a lot of people know about, and, but I just want to say thank you to them and, and to, uh, their board members.
Colleagues, the question before us this evening is, your appointed Golf Advisory Board is suggesting that we continue to allow them some more time to develop the policy. So that's the action I'm asking for.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy? Councilmember Vacaro?
Yes.
Yeah. Motion carries four-one. Tom, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Advisory Board, thank you for doing your due diligence. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to see what develops now. We turn then to public hearings, please.
Okay.
Item number eight, Madam Clerk. And we have some conflicts here.
Yes.
Continued public hearing and Resolution 2017-188 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving the 2017-2018 Engineers Report, confirming the boundaries and ordering the Levian collection of assessments, and providing for notice of hearing thereof for Maintenance District Number Five, Smith Ranch, Rancho Solano.
Councilmember Vacaro has a conflict on this one due to owning property, uh, subject to the assessment, so he will need to step out of the room. Rick?
You have a conflict, Rick. And our, our presenter will be Thomas Barton, and please. Thomas, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Tom Martian, Public Works Manager. Tonight in front of you is the Maintenance District Number Five, Rancho Solano, which is located off Rancho Solano Parkway and north of Waterman Boulevard. This district was formed to provide ongoing funding sources for the maintenance of the landscaping, as well as electrical and operation expenses. Tonight in front of you for your consideration is the adoption of the resolutions, and approving the Engineers Report, setting the assessments for seventeen and eighteen. By conducting a public hearing, we'll complete the final step in the approval process set in the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen assessments. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any comments or questions for Thomas? Open the public hearing. Do not have any request to speak cards in this item. Anyone choosing to speak should do so now. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for council action, please.
This would be the adoption of Resolution 2017-188.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Moy, seconded by Councilwoman Bertani. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Yeah, we will, we will. Roll call, please.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We turn to number nine, and I have a conflict with, I have a conflict with number nine.
Yes, so the mayor will, uh, step down due to owning property subject to the district.
Uh, thank you again for considering tonight, being here for the item number that's in front of you, number nine. The Maintenance District, uh, the COLAB was formed there again to provide ongoing funding for landscape maintenance, electrical and ongoing operation. Tonight in front of you for your consideration is the adoption of the resolutions approving the Engineers Report that sets the assessments for the twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen fiscal year. By conducting a public hearing, concludes the final steps for this adoption of the assessments and, and also the ability to be able to continue on with our funding mechanisms to support this district. If you have any questions, this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer.
Going to open the public hearing?
I, I got a question. Am I going to run this, or is somebody physically there going to do it?
Well, I'm, I just grabbed the gavel because I, I, you were up there and I didn't know if you had one.
Whatever's easiest. I don't know how well you can hear me, anyway.
I can hear you fine. I opened the public, uh, hearing. There are no cards. Seeing as there are no cards, if nobody wants to speak, I'm going to close the public Anybody have a motion?
So moved.
So moved. The Vice Mayor moves, and Vacaro is second. A roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Vacaro?
Yes.
So, as the records are shown now, that Councilmember Moy is abstaining due to owning property in the district. And the mayor will return.
Item number ten, please, Madam Clerk.
Continued public hearing and Resolution 2017-191 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving the 2017-2018 Engineers Report, confirming the boundaries and ordering the Levian collection of assessments and providing for notice of hearing thereof for Maintenance District Number Twelve, Downtown Business District.
And again, our presenter is Thomas Martian. Thomas?
Members of the council, thank you again for hearing this presentation. Tonight is the Maintenance District known as the Downtown Business District, which is located on Texas Street between Pennsylvania and Jefferson. Tonight, the form is the approval of the process of continuing on with the funding mechanisms that was developed, designed, and also formatted to be able to fund the downtown district for this lighting landscaping, as well as for some operational expenses and enhancements, especially with the architectural features that you see down there. With that in front of you is your consideration is the approval of the adoption and of that of the Engineers Report that contains the assessments for this next fiscal year. By conducting a public hearing, we'll conclude the final steps, and will actually allow us to be able to assess for the next seventeen and eighteen fiscal year for continuing operations of the Downtown Business District. It's concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer it.
I will open the public hearing, have no request to speak cards in this item. Anyone choosing to speak should do so now. Close the public hearing and bring it back for council action, please. Any comments or questions for Thomas before we do? Okay? Is there a motion then to approve Resolution 2017-191? It's been moved by Councilwoman Bertani. Is there a second, please? Been seconded by Councilwoman Vacaro. Madam Clerk? Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Vacaro?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. We turn then to item number eleven, please. And Thomas, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act. Public hearing and Resolution 2017-196 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority in an amount not to exceed twenty-five million dollars to finance the acquisition and rehabilitation of Sunset Creek Apartments and certain other matters relating thereto.
And our presenter is Brian Briggs. Brian?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Fairfield City Council. Out in front of you this evening is a public hearing for the use of tax-exempt bonds for the Sunset Creek Apartment Complex. The request is to open a public hearing, take public testimony for anyone willing to speak on the, on the matter. TEFRA hearings are unique because they only are formality, they require the political jurisdiction where the project lies to approve the expenditure in the jurisdiction. However, there's no moral or legal obligation for the city to pay for any of repayment of any of the bonds. That will conclude my presentation. I'm available for questions if you have any.
Comments or questions for Brian? I will open the public hearing, have no request to speak cards. Anyone choosing to speak in this item should do so. Seeing none, close the public hearing and bring it back for council action. Is there a motion then, uh, to adopt? Resolution 2017-196 been moved by Councilwoman Moy, seconded by Councilwoman Vacaro. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Price?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Bertani?
Yes.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.